Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for also for those who have passed away in our community, especially two city employees, Gerard Lamberty, who passed away on January 19th and worked for DPW for 13 years, and Thomas Moll Maholland, who also passed away on January 19th and worked for the DPW for 32 years. We remember them and their families at this difficult time. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here. This evening, before we start the council meeting, I am aware that the Pennsylvania American Water Bills have been received in homes and we do have an announcement concerning those water bills. The new PA American Water Bills have been mailed out and several residents have contacted council office with questions concerning these new bills. You will see on your bill, under the heading of Adjustments, a line that reads, "converted sewer balance." This is the amount of your December bill that you would have received from the Scranton Sewer Authority. If you made that payment already, simply deduct this amount from your current water bill. You will receive the proper credit of payment for both bills and will not be considered in arrears or charged any interest or fee. If your last sewer bill has been paid, just deduct the amount from this current bill and send the amount only. You are not being double billed. Going forward, the wastewater service charge will be listed on your bill every month. Water and wastewater are now combined and will appear on the same bill that you receive each month from the Pennsylvania American Water Company.
And some additional information on that as well, I know we've all were inundated with calls today regarding this. This was in response to Executive Director Shrive from the Sewer Authority, and it reads, "Councilman Rogan, pursuant to your request and information with regard to discrepancies in the residents sewer water bills, I reached out to a representative at the Pennsylvania Water Company. It was informed that any issues with billing are being taken care of in a result of transitioning from the Sewer Authority billing to Pennsylvania American Water Company billing in a relatively short period of time prior to the new bills going out. Certain payments made may not have been reflected on the newly listed Pennsylvania American Water Company bills, but customers will be given full credit for all payments made. Pennsylvania American Water Company has indicated that it will not be charging late payment penalties, interest, or shutting off services in connection with the transition billing issues, so residents need not be concerned with that. Pennsylvania American Water Company hopes to have these billing issues addressed by the release of the next billing statements. This is the information I was able to obtain from the Pennsylvania American Water Company. Please feel free to share the same with your fellow council, members of council and the public. Thank you, Jason Shrive."
Yes, I have two announcements. First, just on the water bill fiasco. I was at a neighborhood meeting last night, and I'm glad my colleagues announced that. But some of the people that came to the neighborhood meeting actually brought their bills with them, and they were elderly people. And it really ticks me off that the water company is so incompetent. They've known this deal was going to take place for the past year, and yet this type of thing happens. So I think that the ratepayers should be compensated for the water company's incompetence and the inconvenience and the confusion they cause, especially with people who are in their 80s and 90s, who have paid their bills their whole entire life and who got something in the mail that said they were past due, and caused undue stress on a lot of people. Second announcement, Friends of Shannon McDonough splashing with compassion, I've announced this for the past few weeks. It will be held this Saturday, January 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Montage Mountains, Scranton, PA. They are a local 501(c)(1) organization, supporting young individuals battling cancer in northeastern Pennsylvania. So I urge everybody to get out to that. And there will be a free home repair from Neighbor Works Northeastern Pennsylvania from July 21st to July 24th. Approximately 250 adult and teenage volunteers will come to Lackawanna County from all across the northeastern portion of the United States to do service work, especially home repair projects, for approximately 35 to 45 modest-income or disabled homeowners in the East Scranton community who need a helping hand, with all work done at no cost to the homeowner. Volunteer groups will work on various projects, including porch repair and construction, step repair, exterior painting, free solar security light, interior painting, wheelchair ramp repair and construction, and weatherization. You can apply by picking up an application at Representative Marty Flynn's office, 409 North Main Avenue, or NWNEPA 1510 North Main Ave., or you can visit the website www.NWNEPA.org for an application, and the deadline to apply for this is February 25th of this year. Thank you.
We're out of sequence a little bit this evening. Does anybody else have any announcements? I just have one. The first 2017 Scranton Neighborhood Summit Meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 31st, 2017, at 6:30 p.m. at Scranton Police Headquarters. This is an opportunity for all active neighborhood leaders to come together and share updates from each of your respective neighborhoods, along with presenting new ideas, issues, and events regarding your neighborhoods and your city. It will also be an opportunity to get updates from the Scranton Police Department and to meet the 2017 Community Development Neighborhood Beat Officers. District Attorney Shane Scanlon will also be attending this meeting.
Third order, 3A Controllers' Report for month ending December 31, 2016.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Tax Assessors' Report for hearing date to be held February 8, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C Agenda for the City Planning Commission Meeting, held January 25, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, city resident and taxpayer. Mr. Wexler, I want to compliment you on updating the public on the status of the broken elevator in the Linden Street parking garage, which you did this afternoon on WIOK radio. That's the kind of support the public needs, that's the kind of service we need. You are the man.
For tonight, for tonight.
Speaking of being the man, I remind you all that it's only 285 days until November 7th, the date of the next general election, and I hope that there will be two important documents released long before then. The Arcadis Stormwater Analysis and, by gosh and by golly, the 2016 City Audit, that we shall see. Like many people, I read with great interest the article in this morning's newspaper about the local services tax, LST tax, and the lawsuit that was brought to prevent it from being tripled. I have no idea whether there's any substance to this lawsuit or not, but if the plaintiffs were to win their case, we're looking at a $3 million hole in the 2017 budget. And if this thing drags on, are we looking at the possibility of LST revenues going into another escrow account like rental registration did?
Well, actually, we're still waiting for the judge to decide if we're eligible for it or not, so independent of that, we still are waiting for approval.
Yeah, but their response is filed in response to the city trying to triple it again, so...
Yeah, it hasn't been collected yet, so I'm sure that'll be decided. I'm over here, Joan. It hasn't been collected yet, so I'm sure that'll be decided.
Let's hope that it goes in the city's favor, because we don't want to see another $3 million hole.
I agree.
And I noted that on January 20th, the 2017 budget was posted to the Business Administrator's webpage, thank you, but it did take 43 days since December 8th, and I think that's just too long. And I wish that the administration, as a matter of routine, I would think that five to seven business days are long enough to post documents like the audits and the budgets. Shouldn't be 43 calendar days, and it shouldn't be after many requests that it finally gets posted. Speaking of the city's website, Mr. Gahn, can you give us an update in Fifth Motion about the council's webpage and when the public will see all these wonderful background attachments?
Sure, I can give it to you right now.
Go ahead.
The iPads, all the equipment has been ordered. They just have to replace one computer in our office. We should be getting trained probably by next week on the program, and within the next maybe two and a half weeks, everything should be up and running.
Mid-February?
That's what I'm hoping, yeah.
Okey-dokey.
The city has been, our staff and the IT department have been trained on the program, so it's just a matter of getting us the equipment, training us, which won't take long, because our end is pretty easy. Putting the link on the website, which shouldn't take long, and then all of the backup will be put up.
Okay.
Okay.
And somebody, anybody during Fifth Motion, please update us on the status of pension reforms and the third-party administrator for the pension plans. And finally, I was at the county commissioners' meeting yesterday. One of their agenda items, University of Scranton was requesting county support for a state grant. This has to do with their famous athletic field, and they were asking for $5.8 million of state taxpayer dollars via state grant. And the only reason that kind of irritates me is, Marie helped me find this, but this is on their own website. Their finances for 2016-17, they have revenue budgeted at $225 million, expenses budgeted for the same, but the market value of their endowment, this is icing on the cake, $165 million. Now, why they need $5.8 million of tax revenue from the state via grant is beyond me, and this is the organization that gives the city of Scranton $175,000 in lieu of taxes. I gotta tell you, I have two degrees from that institution, and it's a good school, but they are not hurting for money, and I don't think that they need tax dollar revenue to upgrade that sports complex. It's a nice project, but they have the money to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Les Spindler.
Evening, Councilor Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Councilman Wexler, just so I have this straight, on the water bill where it says wastewater, that's going to be your new sewer fee right there?
Yeah, there's going to be a basic fee of $19.50 per month, and then a sewer fee.
Yeah, when I looked at my bill, I thought that was an extra fee from somewhere.
Now, that's your sewer bill.
Yeah, because I did call, and he said just subtract, because I already paid mine yesterday.
Yeah, mine is due tomorrow, so it was on my bill.
Okay, that's why I had that straight. Thank you. Okay, first of all, I was here two weeks ago, I spoke about a hole down by the Dorothy Street softball complex. I was happy to say I walked by there the next day, and it was covered with a board already. So I want to thank whoever took this quick action, Councilman Perry, Councilman Rogan, I know you guys spoke about it, so do you have any...
It goes to, you know, DPW.
Do DPW do that?
They're the ones who got out there, and it's just a temporary fix until they can get out there and do something more permanent.
I was gonna say, I hope it was just temporary, but...
Of course.
I think they could have done a little more, maybe put caution tape around it, but at least they were out there very quick, it was less than 24 hours later. So that was a good job. Letter to the editor in the Sunday Times of January 15th, by James Mulligan. He was critical of the mayor for not letting council know about the $12 million shortfall, and I have a quote by him. Says, "It's unconscionable that Mayor Bill Correy would keep council in the dark as it relates to one of the largest and most important transactions in the city's history." End quote. If memory serves me correct, Councilman Wexler, your vote had no bearing on the sale of the Sewer Authority anyway, correct?
No, it did not.
So to me, this is nothing more than a political move by Mr. Mulligan. In today's paper, he said he's thinking about running for mayor. He is running for mayor, because one of my bosses at works said he was already knocking on his door looking for a vote. So it's just a political move, and I guess he's trying to get a jump on everybody else, but I think it's just sour grapes because he lost four, three years ago. Okay, next. Lastly, Councilman Evans, you were asked two questions about finances, and you didn't have answers to either speaker. One speaker asked you a question, and you said, "Where'd you get that information from?" You shouldn't be asking a speaker questions, they asked you a question. I brought this up a long time ago. When Frank Joyce was Finance Chair, he had all the information in front of him. Every week, people came and asked him questions, he had the facts and figures in front of him. I don't think you're qualified to be our Finance Chair. You never have an... Don't laugh. You never have answers.
First of all, first of all, most of the questions are directed at the administration. We don't have to answer any of the questions.
It's a fact.
But I do, I get all the answers I'm asked in a timely manner.
I disagree. It didn't happen last week.
Well, I don't have to answer...
Frank Joyce never asked a person, "Where'd you get that information from?", and Councilman Rogan can back me up on that. He was prepared, he had all his facts and figures in front of him every single week. If he couldn't answer it that night, he had it the next week. He had all his information with him. He was a very qualified Finance Chair. You should follow suit, but you're not qualified.
Well, that's your opinion.
It's a lot of people's, it's a fact.
No, that's your opinion. That's not a lot of people's opinions, that's your opinion.
It's a fact that Frank was well-prepared.
It's not even close to being a fact, but move, go on.
Frank never had to go week to week.
I'm not gonna disparage Mr. Joyce, he's a nice gentleman, but that's...
It's a fact, he was well-prepared. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Bob Bowles, Scranton. You know, I stop and look, and I see the incompetence that flows through this city, not only through the mayor, but through the council. What you people have done, you have literally destroyed this city. Don't tell me you're builders, because you don't know what the real world is. You took the parking authority. $53 million was an original debt. You got $23 million roughly. You still got $30 million in standard debt left, plus the interest. So when you're all done and you start adding in the bond issue fees and everything else, you're over $37 million, plus the interest. You stuck us all with that, and you got rid of the asset. But the incompetence, the total ignorance that I've seen here, is you had to even vote for this, you turned around and paid William Conneboy $1,463,512.48. You realize that? For the parking authority, for legal representation? And then you added another $100,000 on it. Then you added another $200,000 for Abrahamsen, and another 30 here, and another 50 there, for the parking garage? I mean, what is with you guys? Who in God's name gets that kind of money in this city? Why didn't you put it out for bid? Y'all stood here and voted for it. When you put the recovery plan in, Mr. Gahan, everybody else, we're all part of this. The sewer deal, the parking garages, you have literally destroyed the city, each and every one of you. You know, people worked hard here, you gave an asset away, and then you turn around, and the best part of this, I couldn't stop laughing. You wrote a check to Basiliga, not even it was corporation, you wrote it to John Basiliga for $4,157,719.20 some cents. Where are your heads? To pay for parking spaces because of competition? Like, what the hell is competition? You ever been in business? Wendy's competes with McDonald's, Starbucks competes with this one? It's called competition. Yet you people blew over $5 million, well, six, almost $7 million, to Basiliga, on a $1 sale to the garage, and then pay them to fix it. What kind of incompetent thinking did you people even go? What school did you just go to? Wayne, you're a businessman, you've been in real estate. Joe ran corporations. This is how the hell you ran your business? You destroyed us in this city. You're chasing business out, and you're chasing people out. Yet you're, you sit and hand this guy the money up front already for the mall, for parking spaces. Jeez, do I have a spot? Do you have a spot for Bob Bowles that said he has spot number 52? Wayne, you got a number for your parking space? What about your customers? Joe, you got yours? I'm sure you got one, the biggest one probably in the parking mall. They probably got red roses laying there for you to walk in there and say, "Jeez, look what I did for the city." God, Mr. Basiliga, you gotta do more for me than this. You haven't even looked at reassessing the mall. You realize that? It's assessed at $3 million? $3 million, and you gave them $6 million? Have you guys got your heads on straight? I hate to come in and insult you, but that is such a gross, gross thing that I've seen here. You're all responsible. There is no one sitting here, I've read your letter in the paper, Mr. Gahan, but with the recovery plan, you included this. You can't just skirt around the issues. You guys allowed this mayor and the incompetence with the people he's got down there that couldn't even figure out how much money you have coming. Didn't you ever see, Mr. Evans will tell you, when you do a closing, you have a bring-down sheet. Am I right or wrong, Mr. Evans? And it tells you what you're gonna get at the end. Where was that? Who's the geniuses that did the closing? For a million five, a million five in legal fees, and you still don't even know where your money is? Where do you get to the Sewer Authority deal? What are you gonna pay them, $5 or $6 million? Think about what you guys have done here. You know, we have a new president in this country. People are arguing and criticizing, but at least it's a person who's gonna make a change, because you gotta make authority work, and you haven't done that. You know, we're talking about Mexico, we're talking about buying here, buying there. We could grow our avocados. That Steve Corbett's in here blowing his mouth off about avocados from Mexico and everything else. The news media needs to report factual. Let Steve Corbett come in here and talk about you guys, how much money you spent, and you're running for reelection.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
No, I'm, one more thing, you know, when I sit by an American here...
No, Mr. Bowles, your time is up, Mr. Bowles.
I believe in what goes on here, Mr. Wexler. I understand where you're at, but you like to shut people up.
No.
Let me tell you something, pal.
The time is up.
You're running for reelection, I'll have a trailer for you, because you're the last guy that should sit in that seat. Thank you.
I would be honored if you put my face on a big trailer.
That's what I said, don't worry about it. I'll be one of your biggest sponsors.
Lenny Sprebro, Scranton resident. You know, I feel so small after Mr. Bowles whipped my problem, and maybe that's just it, that I, it bothers me that my problem is so small, and I believe it can be resolved so easily, and nothing gets done. How about the meeting that was supposed to be this past Tuesday? I know it was canceled.
It was canceled, waiting on a date to reschedule.
Because of the weather, I understand that.
Correct.
That's, but now is it gonna be forgotten about or just postponed?
Absolutely not.
Is there another date?
Waiting on a, waiting on a date for everybody to come together, the council, water company, and DPW, and city engineer.
Okay, um, see, I had Pennsylvania Water Company out there. Six months ago, I asked why DPW can't come out and fix the road, that the rains, you know, the heavy rains we had during the summer, you know, washed the road away, there's giant So I contacted the water company to come out and look at the situation, and they said they would take care of it. Because there's, I don't know what you call it, like, a pipe that comes up out of the ground that's actually stamped "water." It's in the middle of how the road is all broken up, you know, pieces of blacktop are everywhere. But anyway, they looked at the situation, and because their water pipe there is, anyway, they said they would resolve the problem. They would come and do a hot patch. You know, it's gotta be like eight foot by eight foot. You know, cars are losing hubcaps and stuff coming down that road. But I asked him about the problem with the 36-inch drainage pipe that's in the corner there, and he couldn't understand why DPW can't contract them, they have the equipment, to come and flush the drain. He looked at it while he was there checking out the road situation, and he was like, "Yeah, you got a problem, look at it, it's packed solid there. Why don't they flush it?" But he says that Pennsylvania Water Company is looking for stuff like that to do, and I said, "You know what, I'm gonna bring that up at the next council meeting. Why can't we flush that drain?" I ask it every time I meet, I'm here. Any answers?
That's why we contacted the city engineer, the DPW, we're looking for the same answers you are. I can't tell you why they're not doing it.
Well, I've been here and that, for a month or two.
Mr. Sprebro, the meeting was set up for Tuesday, and it snowed. We're gonna reschedule the meeting. We are asking the questions. We cannot answer them for you, we have to get the professionals to do it. And I disagree that you're saying that we're not doing anything about it when we have the meetings, we have the meeting scheduled.
I didn't say you're not doing anything.
But you're saying you're not getting any answers. We're asking the questions, and we're waiting for the answers, just as you are. You ask the question each week, and we try to answer it each week or update you each week, but I don't have that answer for you. Mr. Perry doesn't have it, he's trying to get it.
But I mean, I def, I understand, and I know where your frustrations come from. I definitely do. And that's why I was disappointed that we had, you know, we've had such a mild winter, but the day that we had all the powers that the can couldn't get kicked down the road that particular day, because everybody was gonna be there, it got canceled an hour before we had it set up.
And I understand the weather, you know, I kinda figured it would happen.
But that's not, that's a reason, but I mean, it's still an excuse as well. I just want to make sure that we get this meeting rescheduled as quickly as possible for our parties, because it's a drain that's full that needs to get cleaned out. It's as simple as that. I just want to get this done as much as you, I really do.
And I will, I'll add, I think all five of us were going to be there. I was going to make... And the majority of us are, were trying to work around our work schedules to attend. You know, it's a simple problem, and it should be a simple answer. Unfortunately, the problem with government on all levels is it's never simple, and we're trying to work through it, and Councilman Perry, I know, has been putting in a ton of time trying to work with PA American Water to get people out there, and we're all on board, we're all trying to help you.
See, I want to tell you, there's another resident who I just spoke to this past week that says they can't handle it anymore. They're moving by the end of the month. There's gonna be another vacant house, and I want to tell you, right now, my, the house that's actually next door to my garage, now there's, that guy moved out because of the flooding problem, and just today, I discovered there's homeless people living in that abandoned house now. You know, what I worry about is like, somebody trying, I have nothing against homeless people, but if they try to keep warm and start a fire in the basement of that house, now my garage goes up, and the next thing that goes is the house.
Could you leave that address with, Mr. Sprebro, could you leave that address of that home?
Yes.
Kathy, so we can get the police...
You know, and I called the city, and I made a report, but I don't know how far it's gonna go.
Well, we'll, we'll follow it up tomorrow.
Okay, that's 227 Dewey Street.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Gahan, Adams Avenue, Scranton. I, first of all, would like to thank Council President Wexler for the lighting, he did attend to some of the lights. He did attend some of the lights. But there are still lights out on Lacoana Avenue. There's lights out in front of Senator Blake's office. There's lights out, I went to the post office at Steamtown the other night. It's dark. There's lights on the facade of the Steamtown Mall that are out. And there's still a significant number. The last time I looked, the light behind the Hilton and Cressler Court between Kildares and the back of the Hilton is out. And about three months ago, there was an accident there. An accident reconstruction team came out during the day. They didn't see the most obvious problem. The accident occurred because the light was out. And the individual involved, I guess, I don't know if he hit a motorcycle, patrolman, or whatever happened, but something happened there. And it would be advisable if somebody's doing an accident reconstruction, that after they take the measurements during the day, they should go out in the evening when the accident occurred and see what the situation looked like. And another thing, I was down at the mall last week and I was very pleased. There were Lacoana County detectives in the Starbucks and they were watching three people and they apprehended all three people with the assistance of the Scranton Police Department. And our taxpayer money was well spent that day and those officers couldn't have been more professional to the man that they had on the floor. But he had five or six box cutters, I saw a holster for a gun and they said he had 45 bags of heroin. He was one of three people they apprehended. I watched the takedown of the one man and it was textbook. They respected his rights and they respected him. And I wanna say on behalf of the people of Scranton, they did a fantastic job. And now another thing, it has to do with the sewer authority, the sewer bills, the water company. As a rate payer and taxpayer, I'm very perplexed about some things that have happened. I don't know, is the sewer authority sold to the water company or is it in limbo?
It's sold.
Well, then why did we appoint somebody $130,000 to replace Gene Barrett?
Because they still have some business to conduct.
Whoa, $130,000 worth of issues. It sounds to me like the money that you got from the sale of the sewer authority, if that's how it's gonna be frittered away, I don't understand it. And I also heard, the last council meeting, I believe, that someone was appointed to a term on the board till 2022. I have an idea what happens about boards. And they go on junkets and they go for dinners and lobsters and everything else. And I think that we're put upon enough by having the wastewater fee. Now, I don't understand it and I'm not criticizing because I don't understand everything, but I don't know how the water company was allowed to cherry pick what they wanted to purchase and let the city and the ratepayers hold in the bag for the part of the system that was very expensive to manage. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. This doesn't have anything to do with me being up here, but in the 60s, I never met Debbie Reynolds, of course, but I took care of her parents' swimming pool. Just thought I'd throw that in. I never saw nobody though, never saw her grandchildren, great-grandchildren. Council was supposed to be an engine, a leader for this city. Somebody referred to you guys as the caboose. You're just not doing a job for the people. You're following this Hermosa plan to the end and it's destroying the city except probably the mall in downtown. A third, maybe just a quarter, but I've been told a third of this city or more is, the people just not doing well. They're lower income, the neighborhoods look terrible, the houses look terrible. I've been there almost 25 years and I've seen the street sweeper. Well, I used to see it pretty often coming from the Naples in the morning at 6:30 or so on Washington, but I haven't seen it in years. And I haven't seen it in front of my house maybe three or four times in 25 years. I don't have no curbs, cigarette butts and garbage every time it rains are all over the sidewalk. The sidewalk is slates that must be 100 years old. And now all this money, you know, we've sold the airport, the golf course, the South Side complex. There's no money from any of these things. Now the sewer authority, the, one of the most important assets we have, it's, it's gone. There's not, nothing to account for. I still don't have no sidewalks. Last month, my, my water bill was $80 and my sewer bill was 83. Tonight, I opened up, that bill was $230. And thank you, guys. Everybody knew the rape of the city is coming. But it's only, and Hermosa live like royalty. They don't pay no school taxes, no city taxes, thanked to Mr. Courtrite. And this is what we get. He promised one thing, Hermosa. Raise taxes like 81% and sell everything. See, Mr. Piccolino has underestimated this man. He is doing one hell of a job. Now that he's finished that part of it, he's got all this time to keep everybody from approaching any of the nonprofits and try to get something in lieu of taxes. That hadn't been accomplished in 100 years. And these are the people that are responsible for the destruction of this city. Like I said, except the mall in downtown, that'd always be protected by you people. This wasn't a sewer deal. You people were never in this deal to be in a, this, this was American Water deal. To control something, you gotta have this end, this end in the middle. You never controlled nothing, nothing about this deal. That's why it was a failure. I sat here six months ago when my friend in Little Rock from Prudential Base told me, if I have any money to start buying American Water stock, because this gonna skyrocket. Now you can start seeing it, can't you? This is what you've done to the people of this city. Well, I certainly support Mr. Duffy and Mr. McMillan and Mr. Picciano, but I'm gonna support and endorse Johnny Superstar like I do every year and hope he gets somewhere this year. We're at the point, what can we do about all this? Do you know that the Pepsi-Cola plant moved out?
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Nobody did a thing in the world to stop them.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Yeah, nobody got off their can to stay, we'll give you some kind of endorsement to stay here, just like Hesser. Where was Mr. Hermosa when they moved out two months ago? Where were you guys? That's what's wrong with the city, just like Mr. Bolus just said. It's just, the government of this city has just gotten away from this taxpayer.
Is there anyone else?
Andy Stray is a Scrantonian. Bob had him be a little, I guess it's an invoice from Public Financial Management. And for Advisory Services, for General Obligation Notes, I don't, Series 206, I guess that was the 10. I hope it was the 10. But he sent in the bill for $725,000, 25, yeah, 725,000 for advisory service. He didn't even say he's hands in the pot. I hope there's a lot more paperwork involved than just this kind of an invoice. Because when I'm gonna park for almost three quarters of a million dollars because somebody advised somebody, I would wind up seeing a lot more paperwork on the whole deal. And you should have, anybody should have, knowing this was gonna happen. I know you were talking about water bill. I too have my water bill. I'm not gonna go into it all. I'm just going, going to a certain section of it. It has a bill from 1117 to 1917, approximately eight days, nine days if you wanna say it that way, for a total, that was the water, extra water service. And then for the water service, I had to pay $31.50 to get rid of that water for the $6.63 water. Does that make sense? That I paid four times as much to get rid of that little water as it was? They never lowered the standard fee, wastewater service charge. Now, the first thing you should do is find out, can that charge be lowered? I was told they were gonna spread the cost of all the syst, over all the systems. But yet this is the same thing the sewer service charged. So are we gonna still pay the same as for the sewer service as a standard charge? Or are we gonna spread it?
The spread was, the spreading was the sale, it wasn't the sewer fee.
How could, how could they have spread the cost of the sewer authority over all their customers? That was done by the company itself.
I believe the logic is what they paid to buy the company, that cost is gonna be spread over all their customers.
But obviously, it's not. Yes, not now. If they're still using the same standard cost, fixed cost.
That's the minimal sewer fee per month, $19.50 per month.
Right, why?
That's the way it's set up, that's the sewer fee. That's not, has anything to do with the sale.
Did you ever request the PUC to look into it, to see if that's the actual cost? They, they had $28 million from this kind of a deal saved. And you know that. That means they were making a huge profit on this whole deal. This thing is supposed to be just at the cost of the system, not necessary to make a huge profit. But I know that's the reason why the electric company sold off the power plants. They're making more money on the transmission costs than they were on the power plant. That's your job. You're there to protect the city, whether you believe it or not. You should find out everything you can about every deal that is, or will be, or that shall be. And don't come and say, well, we can't find out the information. You got subpoena service. That was the whole reason you were given that right. To sit there and subpoena the different people that come before you and get an explanation of everything it is, or will be, or shall be. Not give an answer, but we're paying $5,000 a month for these people. I'd like to get $5,000 worth of work out of you. Attending a meeting doesn't mean a darn thing. You talk, that poor guy is complaining about the drainage. Does that drainage pipe belong to the water company or to the city? Have anybody got an answer on that?
That was part of the meeting.
Yeah, there you go. That should come up real easy, to find out where it's connected to. You should know where it's connected to. But no, you don't. Meeting after meeting, it's, it's called passing the buck. And these people are great at doing that. Everything that comes before you, either you don't know, will know, or shall know. But it doesn't get answered and people have to sue. That's why we got so many lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. I was happy to see that the business administrator finally got around to putting the 2017 budget online. And I am definitely looking forward to the outcome, learning the outcome of the meeting you had on Monday regarding the distribution of the Scranton Sewer Authority windfall that you announced last week. Very anxious to hear that in fifth order.
We said that there's going to be meetings. There was no meeting. There hasn't been no meetings yet.
You said last week there was a meeting scheduled for Monday?
No.
What is, what's holding up the rental registration escrow distribution? I don't, has anybody checked to see why the litigation is, has not been concluded?
The lawsuit is ongoing, it hasn't been settled yet.
Well, but it has, that was the grill. I was in the, I was in the courtroom when, when the rental registration ordinance was done to their satisfaction, which must have been, or you wouldn't have passed it, the legal, I think somebody needs to ask our, our solicitor why it's not settled yet.
I agree, we'll ask that.
I'm surprised people haven't been in here asking for their money. Boy, I mean, you want, you have quality of life ordinances and you want your money in 48 hours, but boy, when it comes to refunding money that's been taken incorrectly, then just stand in line and wait.
My understanding on that is there's, there's a back and forth going on between the city and the plaintiffs.
Well, that's okay, you can tell me in fifth order, okay?
Well, I'm answering you now. There's a back and forth going on right now between the plaintiffs and the city over who pays the legal fees. That's, that's my belief.
When will the, when will the post-rental registration promise of a condemnation ordinance be forthcoming?
We're gonna start working on that soon. That's one of our next projects.
Soon? By when?
Well, we have to get everybody together, so it's probably gonna be sometime, it'll probably start in February or March to get that resolved. We're working on a peddler's license right now, that's been a holdup, which will be done next, working on that starting next week.
The horses have disappeared from 307 and Seymour Avenue and 307 and Snook Street, but nothing appears, no work appears to have been done. Am I to believe that those horses were there needlessly for all those many months? I don't think so. So now we've increased the danger, we haven't fixed the problem, but we've taken the horses away so people at least know that if you happen to go over there, your car's gonna sink down.
Were they Scranton DPW? Marie, were they DPW horses or they, were there DPW horses that were on there?
They were DPW, they were a police department fire, yeah. Okay, and for consistency's sake, what, when are we gonna do something, or have we done anything to enforce the, upon all of the Airbnb vendors within this city, the same thing we did on the Reiners? And if not, why not? I, I went on there today. Still, there's, there's somebody on, in the, in the center of East Mountain, charges $115 a day.
That's a question for license and inspections, I agree.
Well, all of them are, but how long has that been? Have they checked? Have you guys checked? Why, what do you do? I mean, I can't believe.
Check what? What's the question?
Pardon?
Check what?
Check to see whether they, whether our administration is enforcing the ordinance on everybody, knowing that the, how many there are in the city, that they go after one person?
They told me they were checking them all, but I haven't seen results of that. But that's why I've been calling for an overhaul of the zoning code, because that's...
Well, you could follow up on those for starters. I mean, we have people, are they paying the mercantile tax? Who knows? You know, it's only, it's only money. I agree, I agree with everybody else, as I've been saying. We're following the Amerosa plan that had for Newark and we're gonna be Newark Jr. coming up before very long at all. I noticed yesterday the wonderful photo in the, in the Times Tribune of a mother and her daughter sledding out in Moscow. Where do we have sledding in this city for the children or any kind of, any kind of winter activity? We've got... We've got lakes that we own.
No, we need ice on the lake, number one. There's no recreation on Mount Lake because there's no ice right now. And there are no hills. There are no hills, because there's a liability issue. When I was, now, I don't understand why a kid can't find a hill and just slide down it. That's what we used to do. I don't, I'm not sure it's the city's responsibility to have a sledding hill.
Well, I think our children deserve something. I'll be back with the rest next week, good Lord willing.
There you go.
Thanks. City Council, I'm Tom Unfarski. Today I called about my sewer bill. And while I was on the phone with them, I asked them if that included the stormwater. And I was told no, that that would come on a separate billing. Several months ago, I accused this council of raising taxes, fees, and fines. This city council, with the sale of that sewer authority, has just imposed another fee on us. And I think this fee will probably rival the garbage fee. I think over the years, this council has done a tremendous disservice to the people of the city of Scranton. You've imposed all kind of fees, you've taxed everything you can, and you expect us to sit here and take it. I don't think one of you deserves to be on that city council any longer.
Good evening, Council. David Dobson, resident taxpayer. On our lawsuit that was put forth this week, some of the plaintiffs don't even work in town. They don't, they only go to the university, apparently. A few weeks ago, I mentioned this article, White Nationalists Locate a Tax-Exempt Charity. And I'd like to remind everybody that 501(c)(3)'s and (c)(4)'s, all you can do is ask that they pay. Once again, the, and not to put them in the same boat as these people, the university, I was a little flabbergasted with that request for five million dollars for the Southside complex. They brag about what they do for the city and everything, but, excuse me, I think we could use those grants somewhere else, to much better avail. It's just, it's just a shame. Hospital or something, well, they'll save your, they'll save your, your, your life, maybe. Maybe they won't, but all too often, these so-called charities are up to politics, and even bad politics, to their eyeballs. And they get tax-exempt, and then they start applying for grants and everything else. I've been very disturbed that, over certain contraceptive devices being called abort efficiency, falsely, and, I mean, they're up to their eyeballs in politics. I just want to live as a modern person. I don't want to hurt anybody. I don't want to be any problem to anybody. And a little book, if you want my recommendation, Wayne, you guys need to invest in DINKs. You know what a DINK is? Dual income, no kids, couples. Yeah, yeah, because we don't use the school system. You don't have to chase us around usually with the police department. You don't have to do very much for us, and we pay taxes every year.
That's living downtown, by the way.
And we have the money to do it. So we're DINKs.
That's why you grow the downtown, is to attract DINKs.
But at any rate, we really need to take that into consideration. We need to invest in DINKs. That's, that's my recommendation. And last week, there was an issue on prison closings, and I'd like to see our prisons become a lot less crowded. So may, maybe closing them is the idea, and maybe not closing them and giving somebody some help along with their incarceration. But also, I'd like to mention to council that our school system is in dire straits. And we really need to make sure that kids are getting an education, and they're able to go to school and be fed before school. A lot of them are, are poor, and, poor parents. And by the way, the worse they do in school, you can predict how many prison cells you're going to need later, at a hundred and sixty-five bucks a day or something. This quick, it's, it's a local-national issue. All issues are interwoven, as far as I see it. But I had here a thing from Geisinger I picked up at an examination. And the old law, as I remembered a few years ago, before Affordable Care Act or Obamacare, whatever you want to call it, was that you could earn twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars a year. And if you broke your arm, if you were slightly under that, you could get uncompensated medical care. Now, where did that money come from to replace that? Came from your policy, and your policy, and her policy. And every year, the hospital showed their losses. So it's something to consider if you think that, if you're thinking about rushing into some other type of medical care. We really need to take a look at what was wrong and get it straightened out, because personally, I'm tired of a hundred dollars a month of my policy going to somebody else's care, and then no recognition for it. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple things here. Won't take too long. The first thing is just an update on the information we sent over to the city engineer about the no parking in front of the Head Start on Madison Avenue. This is the response that we have gotten. This was, actually went from the city engineer, Mr. Pochas, to the police department. Number one, remove the three existing signs at this location. Currently, there's three signs in front of the Head Start that state fifteen-minute parking, and that no longer is going to suffice for public safety reasons. Number two, install no parking symbols with arrows right, twenty feet back from Crosswalk outside Madison Avenue and Pine Street. Three, install three no parking restricted day signs. And this is going to be for Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that's, again, to allow the children with special needs adequate time to get on the bus and to get off the bus without blocking traffic or making the bus back out of the Head Start Center, which is unsafe in itself. Number four, in the intent of this recommendation to prohibit parking is outlined from the southerly curb line of Pine Street to the southerly property line of Head Start. And number five, approval of ordinance of the city, of city council may be required, which it will be, and we're expecting a February ninth. That's tentative to see this legislation in front of us to be looked at and, and start the process of voting on. Number two, we had Chief Graziano at our public caucus today. He just wanted to go over some of the things with the cost assessment with the Serenti Building versus a pole barn structure. Basically, what this is going to do is going to be to house our equipment that we have that's currently in the Serenti Building. This has been going on for, I believe, over a year. And as of right now, it seems like the cost assessment side, as explained by Chief Graziano, falls within taking the asset of the Serenti Building from the government and applying a government grant of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the upkeep. Now, I will vote yes on this tonight to advance it, but I do want to check with our business administrator, Mr. Balzoni, and just get a chance to run the numbers to see if they check out as far as the finances go on this. But as of his presentation, it seemed to be, as of right now, the best-case scenario of the two. Also, I wanted to make a note on 10, the efficiency network. I know in, in the Southside, Manuka area, which I live, most of the streets are all finished up. As of last week, they have over two thousand fixtures already completed. I think they're brighter. I think they, they're actually outstanding. And, correct me if I'm wrong, was it thirty-year life on the bulbs? What were the, the actual life? So, I mean, we're talking, once this is done, we're, we're not going to have out streetlights for, for thirty years, and this is guaranteed. I want to throw a big thank you out to Governor Wolf for the prison closings. I guess you can say, you know, for lack of a better term, they had a stay of execution for the NEPA area. We got those three kept open, which is, which is absolutely huge. The Jobs Act stays in our area is just, it's just outstanding. So I was very happy to see that. Unfortunately, it looks like the prison in Pittsburgh is the one that got, got the ax this time around, possibly for an eighty-million-dollar-a-year saving, I think is what was said. But NEPA got covered, and I'm very happy about that. And to end, sleigh riding, sleigh riding was brought up, near and dear to my heart. Who doesn't love the sleigh ride? I know we went up to McDay Park often to sleigh ride. It's free, there's lots of hills there, and McDay Park is on the other side of the city. But the good part of living in a city with all hills is there's always a place to sleigh ride. I've lived in Southside, I've lived in Manuka, and there's hills everywhere. So, you know, I never had an issue finding a hill to sleigh ride in, and I hope that there's, there's not issues out there, because it is, it is a lot of fun. And that's all I have today.
Thank you. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, a number of items. First, there was, it was reported in the newspaper, and our fire department is now going to be equipped with Narcan, which is an antidote for anyone who overdoses either on prescription pain medicines or heroin. This is something our police department has been, excuse me, our police department has had for, I believe it was well over a year at this point when council approved, approved that ordinance. Now our fire department will have it, which is a great tool, because of twofold. One, the heroin epidemic in our area. And two, if a child or, if a child happens to ingest prescription pain medication by accident, this antidote will reverse those, will reverse those effects. Same for senior citizens who may take an extra dose by accident. Now our, now our fire department will also be equipped with this valuable tool. And the reason why it's important for the fire department to have it, as well as they're often the first on the scene. For instance, when there's accidents, when there's a number of other events throughout the city, it's many times that our fire department are the, are the first of the first responders. So I'd like to thank our fire department. This is just another service that, that they will provide, and we are truly lucky to have such a great fire department in our city. Moving on to another issue, last week, I mentioned at the council meeting that the DPW did have both the paper red bins and the blue recycling bins. Following the meeting, I put a post on Facebook, and I had an amazing response from a number of people who were looking for bins, had questions about the recycling program. And I'd like to thank Larry Winn at the DPW, who personally delivered some recycling bins to some residents who were unable to go down to DPW to collect them. So I'd like to give him a big shout-out. And just from the response that I've received, there's, there's going to be a number of new people recycling in the city, which is great for our environment and great for our budget, because it does save in dump fees. Excuse me. There were a couple questions that were brought up, and there are two, and these are recurring items. One of them was, I know we do not collect recyclables in the courts. And I know when the recycling routes were initially planned, I believe it was the early nineties, under Mayor Connors, and different equipment was used to pick up the recycling at that time. So if we can, I would like to send a letter to DPW Director Gallagher and ask what the reason why recycling is not collected in the courts, whether it's a logistical reason or just pure manpower. But I do think, especially in courts that do not have access to a main road, we need to expand our recycling program. Now, for roads that have, for instance, most of the neighborhoods throughout the city, especially my neighborhood in West Side, you have, you know, you live on whatever, you know, Bromley Avenue, and then in the back, you have a court. In that type of scenario, it makes more sense to have the recycling pickup only on one. But there are homes that are just in the courts, that do not have access to, to a main street. So I think those people should be, should have, be allowed the benefit of recycling as well. And secondly, I know some of my colleagues have inquired on this, and this is a longstanding issue regarding the Scranton Housing Authority. I'd like to send a follow-up to the Housing Authority to ask them to once again look at instituting a recycling program within the Housing Authority. There are a large number of people that live in Housing Authority-controlled properties, and again, they do not have the opportunity to recycle, and many of them would like to recycle for environmental reasons. Next, I'd like to echo Mr. Perry's sentiments regarding the news that the two local prisons that were on the chopping block are not going to close. That's welcome news to a number of people that live in the area, that work at those prisons, their family members work there. And again, as a matter of public safety, if a number of prisons were closed, they're, the inmates would have to go somewhere. So I would like to thank our state representatives, Marty Flynn, Kevin Haggerty, our state senator, John Blake, and I'd especially like to thank, although he's not our state senator, John Udichak, state senator from Luzern County, who really took the lead on this issue. And I'm not, I don't think I'm going out on a limb by saying, but he's probably the reason why these facilities remain open, because of his hard work and his job convincing Governor Wolf. Pension reforms were brought up by one of the speakers. City council has been very active in a number of pension issues. Obviously, the, the one that's been on the forefront is investigating into the double pension issue, which is still ongoing. At the same time, I have been looking into a number of ordinances in other cities of different controls that can be put in place from a city council standpoint. Obviously, many of the larger issues do need to be initiated from the administration. But in an event such as what happened with these double pensions, there could have been and should have been a control in place where the city council and the public knew exactly what was going on. Whether it would be a thirty-day public comment period, which is common for some other legislation that takes place, so it can't be rammed through in one night or in three weeks, that there is a, a period to take a breath, if there's ever a buyout incentive of any sort in the future. But there's a number of other things that I'm looking at, and I'll continue to report on those as, as I look at them and work with my colleagues for input as well. And finally, since it was still brought up from the podium, and apparently, Mr. Wexler's comments and my comments have still not been heard by some residents, your sewer authority bill did not go up. It was a billing error. I know when you opened that bill, and I've received an erroneous bill as well, when you open it, it's a sticker shock, and you get nervous. And unfortunately, Pennsylvania American Water Company made a very large error on this billing. But I would like to state once again, that the bill that you received, that number on your bill, if you paid your sewer authority bill last month, that is not accurate. What they did is they're charging, they, on your bill, it's listed for what you previously owed and paid because of the lag in the computer systems. Now, if you didn't pay your bill last month, that amount on the bill is what you owe. But for the vast majority of residents in the city, and in Dumois, who are part of the system as well, who paid their bill last month, that is not going to be part of your current bill. If you do have any questions, call Pennsylvania American Water Company. I've talked to a number of residents who did call them, and they were, the issue was explained to them very clearly, and they were told what their actual dollar amount that they owe is. I know there was some back and forth on the usage fee. Previously, with the Scranton Sewer Authority, the usage fee, you received your bill every two months. So you had a usage fee, and then you had your consumption fee. This was... This was instituted, I believe, about 10 to 15 years ago. Prior to that, it was a straight consumption fee, where it was based strictly on the amount of water that you used. It was changed over to a hybrid fee to try to be more fair regarding system improvements. So, the person who uses more water is still going to pay more money, which it should be. But at the same time, a property that may be sitting vacant or isn't currently using a ton of water, they still need to pay something for the cost of maintaining the entire system. That's why that was done. Again, it was probably about 10 to 15 years ago when that was instituted. That flat fee that everyone pays was cut in half, because it's now paid 12 times a year instead of six times a year. So, your actual out-of-pocket is exactly the same. It's just broken out over 12 payments instead of six payments. Your usage cost is the same exact rate as it's always been. The only difference, now, that will vary from month to month, unless somehow you use the exact same amount of water every month. But from one month to another, that part of your bill will vary, and it always has varied, based upon the amount of water that you use. I hope that clears up some of the confusion. And I would like to thank Jim Lockwood in the Scranton Times for very quickly getting an article up on this issue. I know last night and to today, myself, and I know many of my colleagues have been inundated with calls, messages on social media about this, and after some investigation, luckily, we were able to determine that these bills, the majority of them, were issued in error. I know there are a lot of people out there that still don't know this news. Many could be watching, I'm hoping, or listening now. But for the person that's not using the internet, they're not going to find out until, unless they called the water company, until they read tomorrow's paper. So, it's very important that that information does get out there, and if you have any family, friends, or neighbors that are concerned about this and you're watching, please let them know, you know, that it is, these bills were issued in error. I do think that we should do something in getting, as far as getting in touch with the water company goes. On the next bill, there needs to be an explanation on the bills, to explain to the taxpayers and the residents as to what happened and why. And I believe there should be an apology as well from the company. But there needs to be an explanation, so people know what happened and what their actual billing process is. I know a flyer was sent out, I believe it was maybe a month or so ago, from the water company, explaining the new combined billing, which I thought was very informative. But now, after this large mix-up, I think the water company needs to do a little bit more to help educate the public on how their bill actually is put together. Finally, on the Sorenti Building, Chief Graziano came into our caucus tonight and provided a lot of information about how this property is going to be used. I know a number of us, myself included, were looking to take a tour of that building. I believe a couple of our colleagues already did. What the thought is, it's currently being used for storage, as Mr. Perry mentioned, and training. Chief Graziano relayed to us that he firmly believes using this facility will make it easier for him to run the department, and it will be more efficient compared to building a new structure to store some equipment that must be kept in a heated environment. So, I am looking forward to hearing from Mr. Balzoni as to his assessment on the financial impact, but from talking to the chief, if Chief Graziano believes this is the most efficient way to run the department and to achieve the results, the great results that he's been achieving, I would be fully in support of this project. I guess that is all. I have some comments on some other agenda items, but I will wait till they come up. Thank you.
You said "finally" twice. Just here. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. Last week, a speaker asked a question about the refuse fees going into a separate account. I did what I always do. I pointed the question to the administration, where they are responsible for answering those type of questions. And the answer was that the fees are indeed deposited into a separate special city account. The deposits go into a refuse account, which allows them to account for all refuse receipts separately. Asked and answered. Number two, I got an email, again, from Neighbor Works about our Scranton Homeowners Assistance Program that was developed here at Scranton City Council. I just want to read part of it from Jesse Ergot, the president and CEO. "I wanted to add that we've received so much positive feedback on the program from the recipients and staff that we've applied for two large neighborhood revitalization grants that aim to help expand this program to serve more Scranton homeowners. It really is a great model to both encourage homeownership and improve the physical appearance of the neighborhoods." So, that's going very, very well. On the audit front, our expectation is that we will have the audit completed by June 30th. Not bad. Big improvement. Marie asked about Airbnbs. I will check to find out if there is enforcement going on for all the Airbnbs in the city. The problem is that it is not clearly defined in the zoning code. That's why last week, I asked for a comprehensive study and a new writing of a new zoning code. It's very, very important to look at those things that have not been addressed, that came on over the last 24 years since the last zoning code, to be addressed, and Airbnb is certainly one of those items. On the SSH transaction, I think somebody asked last week, did we receive the money? Yes, we have received approximately $69.9 million, and they're currently in two separate accounts. I won't comment on the actual appointment of Attorney Shrive as the executive director/attorney of the Scranton Sewer Authority. I'm going to leave that up for others to dissect. But I will say that I have expectations for the new director to provide us information on a timely manner. In fact, I will be requesting that we receive monthly status reports on how the wind-down on the sewer authority is progressing. Also, I would expect and demand that we have a monthly accounting of every dime that is spent relative to the wind-down. There is approximately $5 million set aside for that process, and every dollar that is not spent comes back to the city, which is vitally important to all of our taxpayers. The $5 million should not be viewed in any way as a blank check to spend during the closure period. Also, I would expect the new director to be our point man on giving city council a comprehensive accounting of the $12 million in cash that was apparently spent on ongoing mandates of the sewer authority during the timeframe of the acceptance of the offer to buy and the actual closing. And I would join my colleague, Councilman Gawn, in looking into our subpoena power if any of that information is not forthcoming. One more point on the sewer transaction and the vote that was taken in December on the sewer authority legislation. Our vote was based on the information provided to us by the administration, that the legislation provided the legal means to begin the process of dissolving the sewer authority. It was also a means that allowed for the transfer of the proceeds from the sewer authority to the city of Scranton. It was not legislation that gave city council a blessing on the deal or authorized the deal. That was the sole purview of the sewer authority, and the deal was going to be closed with or without legislation being passed. The only difference would have been the legislation, if it did not pass, the money from the sale would have remained with the authority and would have not been transferred to the city. I don't think anyone would have appreciated that outcome. And finally, on the appointment of Jessica Boiles as the city solicitor. I have been working with Jessica at our weekly meetings with PEL for as long as she has been with the city. And I'm extremely confident in Jessica's abilities, and she will be an excellent city solicitor. So, congratulations, Jessica, and good luck in your new position. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn?
Yes, thank you. First, we received a petition from residents on Silox Street for a no parking sign, so we're going to submit that to the city engineer to take a look at. I received an update that the city is developing procedures for the collection of leaf waste using, for the collection of leaf waste using brown bags. So, the city is looking into possibly purchasing brown leaf and yard waste bags. And my only suggestion would be, whatever they do, it needs to be run better than it was this year, and people need to know exactly when they're picking it up and know what the schedule is, because that was a point of contention as I go throughout the neighborhoods. Couple concerns at the Hill Neighborhood Association meeting that I attended last night. First of all, and we have been inundated with phone calls from people who are upset with Comcast. Their rates are going up, there's no Yankee Channel, you know, they moved the service center to Dixon City, even though we are their largest customer. And, you know, that's one of the reasons that I voted against that Comcast deal. I really think that they're holding people hostage. I mean, you have elderly people who look at their bill, don't understand why it's going up, and they're not getting what they pay for, in my opinion. So, you know, continue to call them and make complaints. The other thing that came up at the neighborhood meeting was the lack of street signs in the Hill section. I would like to send a letter to the DPW asking them if they could make a concerted effort in the Hill section and really all throughout the city to replace and put up street signs. One street that was mentioned at the neighborhood meeting was Clay Avenue. Also, there is a lack of one-way signs and stop signs in the Hill section. So, if we could also include that in the letter. There is a large pothole in the 600 block of Mahone Court and a large pothole in the 700 block of Prescott Avenue. I have received a number of complaints, as I do almost daily, on the condition of Colory Avenue in Manuka. I realize that the utility company filled the trenches, but the road is still in a disgraceful condition, and it won't be paved until the spring, which, to me, is unbelievable, given that we are going to be in the middle of winter. So, again, at the Hill section neighborhood meeting, the issue of pave cuts come up, and I'm still not satisfied with the way that that program is being run. I did read in the newspaper about the Young Property on Wyoming Avenue, an update, the hole gets bigger, and again, it's a total shame. By the city putting that plywood over the hole, they're basically admitting that they are responsible for it. And in my opinion, if this hole was in anybody else's backyard that had political connections or knew somebody in City Hall, it would have been filled last year. So, the mayor should be ashamed that the situation was allowed to get to this point. Just an update on the street lighting project. Again, when I was at the neighborhood meeting, a lot of discussion about the new street lights as they're making their way through the Hill section, and people are viewing them, I think, very favorably. I have heard some complaints that the street lights in some areas are sporadic. So, you have a light here, and then you don't have a light for a block or two. The city with this company, TEN, is completing an assessment, neighborhood by neighborhood, to determine if additional lighting is needed in these neighborhoods. And as I said, one of the problems is that the location of the lights are sporadic. So, the company has moved through East Mountain, and they are now in the Hill section retrofitting the lights. I have two motions that I'd like to make regarding the Scranton Sewer Authority. The first one is, I'd like to make a motion that city council submit our sewer authority-related questions in a right-to-know request to the executive director of the sewer authority.
I'll second that for discussion.
On the question?
Yeah, on the question. The reason that I'm making this motion, you know, we requested information from the sewer authority, and we haven't gotten it yet. It's been a few weeks. Now, we have a change in who the executive director is, and that's fine, and maybe we will get the information February 2nd or whenever. But I still think that we should cover ourselves, because I think this is becoming a stall tactic. And, you know, if someone told me, "Don't hold my breath," if I do hold my breath, I'll be dead at this point. This is important information that this council needs to see. We were left in the dark on this deal, and I just think, to cover ourselves, we should submit a right-to-know request, and that's why I make the motion.
Well, on the question, I don't believe we need to cover ourselves right now. Mr. Shrive took over the job on Monday. There's no reason to believe, as of Thursday night, at this time, that he won't answer our questions. Right-to-know is a lengthy process that can be denied within the city and then has to go to the state of Pennsylvania. So, personally, I would rather try to work with Mr. Shrive right now and give him a week or so, and we always have the Freedom of Information Act as an option.
I think, now, Councilman Wester, is the letter request for information by next Thursday?
Yes, we resent the letter to him. Mrs. Reed, I think we found out Monday that Mr. Shrive was going to become the attorney, and I think we got it to him. It may have been the first letter he received at about 3:30 on Monday, I think.
Okay. I mean, I'll tend to go along with the idea of waiting till next Thursday, but I agree with Councilman Gawn. If we don't get a quick response after the delay is delayed, we're going to have to move forward either with a right-to-know or if they're stalling on information, even using our subpoena power, if that's appropriate.
Just a question to Solicitor Menora. If we do file a right-to-know request, does that relieve the director from not having to answer us at all until the FOI is answered?
Well, I don't know that it relieves him of a responsibility to answer, but it gives him a lot more time to answer and a lot more appeals to...
So, once we file that, he can say, he can be waiting for the decision to be, correct?
It could be, it could possibly be counterproductive.
That's why I would rather wait a little while, at least, before we issue a Freedom of Information Act request.
If I may, though, I'd like to, and I'm not maybe in a form of motion, but we're talking about this right now, but add that I would like to see monthly reports on any expenditures and receivables at the sewer authority.
Yeah, I agree with that, Councilman Evans. And as we were going to go through our motions, I was going to get together and work on that request, because I don't think that's very unreasonable. And there is going to be daily product, there should be daily product coming out of the administrator's office. I believe there is going to be a secretary in that office as well. So, I think there should be, information should be readily available. There still is the sewer authority board that Director Shrive will have to report to. So, I would believe that they would also be interested in the same information that we're going to request. So, I think that's a good idea, actually.
Yeah, on the question, would that benefit us to send a second letter to Mr. Shrive, just kind of explaining our intentions, that he has a week, you know, to get his answer, get us some information, but it is this council's intent to get that information, and if we have to do it to a Freedom of Information Act, then that's what we'll do.
Yeah, we've already...
I don't want it to sound threatening, but I just want Mr. Shrive to know that the council, there is something coming from him to us, one way or the other.
We already did establish the second as a deadline for him.
Okay.
And once again, I'm reluctant to put the specter of the Freedom of Information Act in there, because he may...
And again, I don't want it to sound threatening, but I just want him to just to realize that, you know, this is something that we need, and we are willing to pursue another avenue if it's not voluntary, given to us on a deadline.
Correct. I would like to have, actually, as Mr. brought up, two separate issues. The questions that we're asking on the sale and also now the questions on the cleanup, I think is kind of, it's just as important, but separate. I'd like to set up some type of mechanism for us to get that reporting.
I would just add, I think we all want to see the information, but Attorney Shrive's been in this job for four days. I don't think he would be expected to send a lengthy reply, and it was a very lengthy request. I think there needs to be a reasonable amount of time given to reply and a thorough reply. So, at this point in time, I don't think that would be the best course of action, and again, a little off the topic, but the idea of a work session to discuss this is something I would fully support. I'm not sure how my colleagues feel about that. That's something maybe we could discuss in caucus next week.
Anyone else? There's been a motion made and seconded on the question. You did the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? The noes have it, the motion does not pass.
Okay. And I'd like to make a second motion, that city council requests weekly status reports or updates regarding the pending issues, all pending issues related to the Scranton Sewer Authority.
Second. On the question, I think...
Yes, on the question.
Just, Mr. Gahn, just before...
Sure.
We discussed the framework a little bit, so if we could narrow it down to something specific more, as Mr. Evans mentioned, I think we could agree on that.
Well, sure. On the question, any pending issue related to the Scranton Sewer Authority, which is, obviously, we voted to dissolve the authority, so there's still a board, there's an executive director and a solicitor, so there's all these issues. Any pending issue that's holding up the dissolution of the authority, the easements, lawsuits, I would like a weekly or monthly status report on that, because I think we need to monitor it, as Mr. Evans had pointed out.
I agree with that. I think the sewer authority operates more on a monthly basis, so I believe the director would be reporting to the board on a monthly basis. I'm not sure weekly would be practical, but monthly, I think, is doable.
Right. Well, to expand that, I think, besides what Councilman Gawn is saying, I think what I talked about before is to really look at the dollars that stands to receivables and the expenditures. Some sort of balance sheet that we get every single month should be at the bare minimum. Some sort of balance sheet that we get every single month should be at the bare minimum as they spend down and wind down the Sewer Authority, even the $5 million that's been allocated.
I would agree, and was the motion for weekly or monthly?
Weekly.
I think as, and I support the idea completely, that's why I second the motion. I think monthly might be a better, a better use of, of the request, but I think it should come to us with reports the, the same way all of our third-order business does. At the beginning of the meeting, for instance, we received the Controller's Report, this month, the Tax Assessor's Report, and the Planning Commission Report. I think it should be included in, in those as well.
Right, but it shouldn't be just the minutes of the Sewer Authority meeting, it should be far more comprehensive than that.
No, this is an addition.
Yeah, right.
I guess weekly, I, because the motion is weekly, I would be against that, but if it was monthly, I would support it. And just as a point of clarification, I believe the Council rules do state, these items should be produced in advance. I know, you know, and I still second it because I support it. But in the future, I think if we could discuss these in caucus...
Well, we didn't have the chance because Chief Graziano was in there.
Right, but in most situations, if we could discuss this in caucus, I think we could come up with a, an agreement that we could all support.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.
No. Well, basically, I think the hang-up was the...
It was a timeframe.
Yeah, the one week. I think we said, I think we discussed monthly.
No, the vote was weekly.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we request monthly status reports or updates that are sent to City Council regarding the pending issues related to the dissolution of the Scranton Sewer Authority.
Second. All those in favor signify, by signifying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so move.
Thank you. In staying on the topic of the Scranton Sewer Authority, I am concerned by the recent news that our city Solicitor has resigned to take the position as the Executive Director/solicitor of the Scranton Sewer Authority at a salary of $130,000 a year. First, I have several questions that I would like answered. Number one, where is the money coming from that will be paying Mr. Shrive's salary? Number two, is the salary inclusive of health and medical benefits? Number three, what are the exact, specific responsibilities and duties of this position? I'd like to see a contract or an agreement, if there is one, between the Board and Mr. Shrive. Number four, is there a conflict or an ethical concern in having an Executive Director act as the Solicitor at the same time? And I'll give you an example. If the Executive Director makes a recommendation to the Board and then the Board in turn wants a legal opinion, how does the Executive Director, how does that work? I don't understand that. So is that an ethical issue or is there a conflict there? How can you have a person that makes a recommendation to the Board give a legal opinion on that recommendation also? Also, is there a conflict or an ethical issue in the fact that Mr. Shrive was involved in the Scranton Sewer Authority deal, working on behalf of the city, and then gets hired by the Authority? So I'd like to know exactly what role he played in the negotiations. Why isn't the Sewer Authority paying the city rent for the office space on the first floor of City Hall, which is directly across the hall from the Mayor's Office? I'd like to know, was that space, was that office space open, or were offices, or was there an office there with employees in it, and was that moved around to accommodate this arrangement? Will there be any money spent on renovating the office or ordering new equipment? Is city equipment or furniture currently being used in this office as it currently stands? And will there be any additional hires to work in that office that are not currently employed? Let me say that I respect Attorney Shrive and his abilities as an attorney, and I'm certainly not questioning Attorney Shrive. I'm questioning the action, not the person. But quite frankly, this whole thing stinks to me, and it stinks to many other taxpayers that I've talked to. This arrangement is similar, in my opinion, to the fox guarding the hen house. Mayor Cortwright, since he has taken office, has made it a point to take care of his friends, and this is another great example, another political favor to add to the list. How can the mayor or anybody defend paying someone $130,000 to be an Executive Director and Solicitor for an authority that has no employees? The mayor has continually given key employees raises over the last three years, and this recent move is a blatant cash grab, paid for by the ratepayers of this city. How convenient is it that the mayor has no problem providing space for Mr. Shrive right across the hall from his office, rent-free? The ratepayers are essentially, in my opinion, paying $130,000 for another advisor for Mayor Cortwright during an election year. Once again, Mayor Cortwright is flagrantly wasting the ratepayers' money and promoting a devastating lack of transparency. And that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gohn. In regards to Attorney Shrive's appointment to the Director of the Scranton Sewer Authority, one thing to remember, and we were informed this, Jerry Cross, Pennsylvania Economy League, has worked with Mr. Shrive on several occasions, and he actually felt that this would be a good transition for getting this deal complete. Attorney Shrive was active in the negotiations for this, for the Sewer Authority, so he's familiar with the, the issues that are remaining, so he does bring some expertise to that. We just spent 10 minutes going over all different questions that we're gonna be asking of this Director, so obviously, there is some type of job for him to do, and he is familiar with, with the, with the issues. So that is, that is, the functionality is going to be performing. We are, we were informed that there is gonna be a secretary in that office, which will also be paid by, out of the Sewer Authority. And in terms of whether Mr. Shrive is in this office free or over on Adams Avenue where they're paying a lease, personally, I would rather have Mr. Shrive here in City Hall. It gives Mrs. Reed access to him because he's only downstairs, and I think this is something that, that we have to work our way through, and I do believe Mr. Shrive brings some expertise to this position. Just getting back to Mr. Evans' comment regarding the termination of the Sewer Authority. Recently, there's been a lot of comments that City Council did not do its due diligence in terms of this deal. A lot of comments that the deal is a bad deal. What would have been a bad deal is if we did not take that vote and we did not terminate the Sewer Authority. The money would have remained with the Sewer Authority. The city would not have received any benefit from the sale. As we've been talking about, probably since last August, we've been talking about how little bit of a role City Council has played in the transaction. But the role that City Council is gonna play is gonna be the largest part of the transaction. Beginning in a few weeks, or maybe two weeks from now or so, this council will decide where that money is spent. Just, everyone should just stop and think about that. The majority of this council will decide where that money is going to be spent. Mayor Cortwright, Business Senator Bolzoni, all the advisors and all of the consultants can make recommendations to this council, but it will be a majority of this council who decides where, where that money is spent. It is a huge responsibility for us to do. The money is already in hand. We're only gonna get one opportunity to get this right. There's several different scenarios that have been proposed. We've been approached by a few people that have some several unique ideas on what to do with the money and how to protect the citizens. And we hear you when you say that this, this is your money. We know that it is. And this is our opportunity to make sure that this, that this once-in-a-lifetime sale of an asset, which we didn't, no one wanted to do, will result in a true improvement of the city. This evening, we heard what a terrible job council's doing, been doing. I'm sorry to say to these, to these, the naysayers, the financial community disagrees with you. Right now, out in the financial community, the City of Scranton is getting glory reviews. The amount of money that costs for us to borrow on the tan from where we were three years ago was tremendously lower. The amount of investment that we're seeing in the city is up. And everyone has their opinion, and we're here, we're paid $5,000 to sit and listen to it. I disagree that we only come to meetings. I know Mr. Perry, Mr. Rogan, Mr. Gohn, Mr. Evans, every day, we're doing something. So I disagree with the fact that you, that you don't believe that we're doing anything. Yesterday afternoon, the people of the Oakmont Neighborhood Association reported several, several break-ins. Fortunately, I was able to contact Chief Graziano and some of the neighbors, and we're gonna have a meeting on Monday night in, in the Oakmont Neighborhood Association to talk about these issues. That's something that I was doing last night at 8:30, 9 o'clock at night. That's the job that I signed up to do, so even though you don't see us all the time and you only see us on Thursday nights here, every one of these, my colleagues, is working every day to serve the people. And I, I'm sorry that a lot of it, people disagree that we're not doing a good job. I disagree with them. I think we're doing a wonderful job. I think we're doing a very good job in terms of getting our financial problems under control at a minimum. And, and I'd like to congratulate, actually, my colleagues for the work that they do. Mr. Gohn talked about the Comcast. It's my understanding that the YES Network will be back around April the 1st. So if you're a Yankee hater, you can sit home every night and hate on the Yankees. Mr. Rogan mentioned the, the new additions to the fire department. The opioid problem in our area is terrible. Many, many of our crime problems come from heroin addiction. Many of our citizens are exposed to heroin, and this is becoming a real threat to our community, and hopefully that this, this new addition will be able to save, save some lives. And just to touch one more on the, on the water bill. I'm not sure if everyone read their bill. I got mine yesterday. The bottom line was, I think, $197 that I owed. I owe them, tomorrow, I owe them $75. So if you flip the bill over, the amount that you owe, your true bill is on the back. The front of my bill said $199, the back of my bill said $122. So flip your bill over and the proper amount should be on the back. And that's all I have, thank you.
I have one additional thing. I just wanted to...
Mr. Gohn, the comment section is when you make your comments. When comments have been made.
Yeah, and I have one additional comment.
But if you could...
If you have somewhere to be?
If you could, if you could, I'd like you to make all your comments at once so we could keep the flow of the meeting going.
Well, I'm not perfect, Mr. Wexler. I forgot to mention something. I wanted to make a point of clarification. That's why we have public meetings.
It happens quite often.
Well, I don't think, Solicitor Menora, is there, am I doing anything out of turn here by saying I have an additional point I'd like to make?
You're not doing anything wrong. I'm just asking you to try to get everything together.
Well, no, let's hear from the Solicitor. Am I doing something out of turn here by saying, excuse me, Mr. President? I have an additional point I'd like to make before we go to fifth order, or fifth, sixth, or seventh. Could you please let us know? Because if I am out of order...
I'm not saying I'm doing anything wrong.
Well, you're the one that brought it up. Go ahead.
The President runs the meeting. He has, the President of Council runs the meeting and has the ability to run it as he sees fit, according to the rules of council, and I don't know how else to answer it beyond that. You know, you're asking for courtesy, and I think the President is asking that we try and keep a, a protocol going. I don't see anything wrong with either position.
Well, let me rephrase it then. Mr. Wexler, would you mind if I made an additional comment? It won't take up too much of your time.
Mr. Gohn, I don't know what your comment's about my time. I'm here as long as the meeting goes. I have nowhere to go.
Well, then, can I make my comment so we can move on? I was gonna make one additional point. I don't see what the big deal is. And that was to say that, and Mr. Wexler jogged my memory, and I want to make a point of clarification. There's no question that Attorney Shrive is familiar with the issues. There's no doubt about that. There's no question about Mr. Shrive's capabilities. This isn't even about Mr. Shrive. This isn't anything personal. This is about the appearance of this whole deal, of this whole thing, this whole setup. That's what I'm questioning. And I do have questions, and they may not always be popular, and I take heed for them. But I'm doing my job. That's why you put me here. So excuse me if I have an additional point of clarification that I'd like to make. I thought that's why we were elected, and that's why we had an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
5B for introduction. In ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the local share account grant funding through the Pennsylvania Gaming Local Share Account in the amount of $250,000 awarded through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development and to execute the local share account grant contract and disburse the funds for the conversion of the Sorento Memorial Army Reserve Center, also known as CSM Samuel P. Sorento U.S. Army Reserve Center located at 1801 Pine Street, into an emergency services center to be used by the Scranton Police Department and for storage of large, expensive vehicles and equipment that cannot be safely stored in any other facility currently owned or operated by the city.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5B, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. This is the acceptance of a grant that we already were awarded. This is going to go towards the renovation of Sorento Building that's gonna be coming up in 5C as well. We spoke about this. This is just simply gonna be put towards the replacement, repair of roofing, and some of the other major needs that that structure has.
On the question, I will be voting in the firm of tonight on 5B and 5C, just to move it along. I plan on doing a site visit to the Sorento Center sometime next week as I move towards deliberation and final vote.
On the question, first of all, I'd like to thank Chief Graziano for coming into our caucus. There's no question in my mind that he is one of the most qualified and one of the best chiefs, chiefs of police that we have in the state and in the country. I voted against this the last time that it came up, a few months ago, and I can totally understand the intent and why they want to do this. But I really do not believe, at this point, as a distressed city with the budgetary problems that we have, that we should be acquiring a major piece of real estate at this point. We struggle to maintain what we have now. And again, I do understand from listening to Chief Graziano, the intent behind it. I think it's commendable and admirable, but we're gonna be adding cost to our budget, heating, air conditioning, regular maintenance, that I don't believe at this point, we can afford or sustain over the long run. And at this point, we are not even sure what those costs are going to be as it relates to our budget. So if this turns into an actual office for the Police Department, and again, this is a pretty large building, we don't know what the effect is going to be on our budget. So I don't see the immediate need for it, and I am concerned about the costs that we may incur over the long run, and that it will eventually end up being a money pit for the city. Thank you.
Well, just to follow up on that, I believe that the immediate need that Chief Graziano said was the, the grant will run out, and we'll lose that grant, and there'll still be a need a place where we're gonna have to house our expensive equipment, and then we'll be without that $250,000 grant to do it.
Yeah, I did make a visit there last evening. The equipment that in there is, is very impressive. There's millions of dollars of equipment that are stored in that building right now. One of the concerns we had last year when we voted on this, we, we looked at other, perhaps other locations to build a storage center or even another look, another use for that location where the Sorento Center is. We explored the property behind Scranton Police Headquarters. There's some owning rights back there, and there's some problems in terms of developing that site because of, of some environmental conditions and some extreme costs. One of the other things we looked at was perhaps, was tearing down the Sorento Center and thinking that some type of residential neighborhood. The BRAC Commission from the Army prohibits those type of uses for that type of facility. As I mentioned, the equipment that I saw last evening there, it's very modern, it's very expensive. It would be foolhardy to leave it exposed to the elements. Even though there may be increased cost to protect it, we would not be doing our jobs if we weren't protecting that equipment. It's very important, a lot of it is used during lifesaving events, emergency events, and to find out that it would not be operational because it was left out in the cold would be irresponsible.
I touched on this a little bit on the motions, though.
I'll just reiterate my, my position, and I will say, I am looking forward to a site visit as well. I will be trying to join Councilman Evans when we hear back on regarding a site visit. But there's, for me, there's three issues in play. The first one, which is talked about a little bit, is, is the cost. But Chief Graziano did explain to us in our caucus tonight that if we do not move forward using this route, the city would have to build a building to store much of this equipment. And the cost of building a new facility far outweighs the cost of rehabbing an old facility. Additionally, this facility is not only going to be used to store equipment, which is the primary use now, it's also going to be used for training, and it's currently being used for training for our police officers and our firefighters. I have tremendous respect for Chief Graziano. I think the work that he does and the men and women of our police department has, is what has kept Scranton afloat for the last decade. But we had tough financial times. One thing that was always strong in Scranton compared to our neighbors, especially in Wilkes-Barre and Hazelton, is our public safety. And I worked in Wilkes-Barre and Hazelton. You don't want to live there. Scranton is a very nice neighborhood, has very nice neighborhoods, and, and we're definitely on the rebound. So if our police chief believes going this route is the best way for him to operate his department and keep the people of Scranton safe, I'm fully in support of the project.
One more thing on the question. I totally understand where Councilman Gahn is coming from, because I think that my biggest problem is the recurring cost down the road. So I think we're going to get another piece of legislation where we actually have to accept the purchase of this at some time? Or not the purchase, but accept it from the, from the government, federal government?
Yes.
Well, no, that's, that's actually, I think, the lease, I think, or that, is that temporary?
Yeah, this is so we can see, is so we can keep the equipment in there.
Right. And then eventually, we'll get another piece of legislation, I think, that will actually accept the property from the federal government.
That's correct. The BRAC Commission works very slowly. It takes many, many years, a lot of, for the federal government to go through the BRAC Commission and decommission a property and, you know, in this case, basically donate it to the city.
Well, my thought would be is, at that point in time, we may be able to make something, an amendment that creates a condition that, is it Engine 15 on, on Ash Street?
Yes.
That it be sold, that would be a condition. And then when it is sold, the money be put in a special account for utilities and maintenance at the Sorenti Center on an ongoing basis. You know, so we at least know that for the next five or 10 years, those recurring costs will be taken care of in a, in a, without dipping into the general fund. So, but then again, that's, that's for discussion down the road, but that was just a thought that, that may be something we could do.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction. A resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into the Department of the Army license number as noted, granting the city of Scranton use of the government's premises located at the former CSM Samuel P. Sorenti U.S. Army Reserve Center, 1801 Pine Streets, Scranton, PA 18510.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5C, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction. A resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for the installation of the solar-powered, two-sided, rectangular, rapid-flashing beacon system, new crosswalk, and signing. The Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority plans to have these installed as part of their safety improvement project at Elm Street and Lackawanna River Heritage Trail intersection.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5D, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, I did discuss this with Tom Priambo from OECD today. He did relay to me that this is being funded through OECD with HUD funds. They do have an agreement to provide construction, administration, and funding for the total project assisted by their engineering firm. There is a separate contract with ESC Design for the engineering component, and our engineer, John Poshus, is providing the city's technical review and oversight for PennDOT's requirement. It's a great opportunity to improve our overall infrastructure and provide much-needed safety at this section of the trail.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5E for introduction. A resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement binding between the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority and the city of Scranton pertaining to the maintenance of the solar-powered, two-sided, rectangular, rapid-flashing beacon system at the intersection of Elm Street and the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5E, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5F for introduction. A resolution of the city of Scranton supporting the proposal to designate a portion of Pennsylvania Route 6 as a Pennsylvania byway.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5F, be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed with Council Number 82, 2017. An ordinance amending file of the Council Number 6, 1976, entitled "An Ordinance Has Amended, Imposing a Tax for General Revenue Purposes on the Transfer of Real Property Situate Within the City of Scranton, Prescribing and Regulating the Method of Evidencing the Payment of Such Tax, Conferring Powers and Imposing Duties Upon Certain Persons, and Providing Penalties by Imposing the Rate of the Realty Transfer Tax at 2.10% for calendar year 2017, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter."
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, filed with the Council Number 81, 2017, approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license currently owned by Another Time Restaurant LLC, trading as AV Restaurant Music Borough, license number as noted, to Another Time Restaurant LLC, trading as AV Restaurant, for use at 320 Penn Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I did get a chance, because everybody just said so many great things about AV Restaurant. I did go to it, which is located in, in Music, which is close to Scranton. And it is fantastic. It was a great place, and I'm looking forward to opening day in Scranton.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 103, 2017, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Daniel Kozlowski, 526 South Irving Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for installation of gold-colored vinyl stickers that read Candy, Lunch, Coffee, Snacks, and Abbeys to Go in the style of existing lettering on the building and surrounding buildings at 150 Adams Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 104, 2017, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Thomas Jaworski, 913 South Main Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for installation of gold-colored vinyl stickers that read Wright, Reiner, Mulcahy, Grammelski, excuse me, and Tunis in the style of existing lettering on the building and surrounding buildings at 148 Adams Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee, Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 105, 2017, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Widmer Sign Company Incorporated, 2209 Amelia Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for installation of six feet wide by four feet high awning constructed of matte black aluminum, which will be lit with soft LED lighting with a 24-inch projection with lower section of awning to have poly, polycarbonate panels to illuminate graphics, logos. With additional approval to not have to go before Harb to replace signage panel that will display the name of the tenant's business. Application must be resubmitted only if LED lighting and/or changes to awning are made at 406 Spruce Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 106, 2017, reapportment of Joseph A. Ricardo Jr., 944 Monroe Avenue, Apartment Number 1, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, as a member of the Shade Tree Commission effective December 7, 2016. Mr. Ricardo is being reappointed to a two-year term which will expire on December 7, 2018.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 107, 2017, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal permit number as noted for the modification of the existing traffic signal at North-South Main Avenue and Jackson Street.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?